Good evening, everyone. Notice here by giving the city council, City of Alpine, Texas will hold a workshop meeting at 5:30 PM on March 10th, 2022, at the city council chambers located at 803 West Holland Avenue in the City of Alpine, Texas, for the purpose of considering the attached agenda. This notice is posted pursuant to Texas Open Meeting Act, Government Code 551.043. Workshop presentation discussion regarding emergency medical and proposals. You want to go ahead?
Yes, Honorable Mayor and Council, thank you for allowing this. I just wanted to make this kind of another side meeting or additional meeting. It is very important for both entities, the county and the city. The city does have an involvement with this in regards to the majority of your 911 calls will be within the city limits. The county did work with the city in having a coed meeting that all of you were present at, but not all of our council was present. This is a decision that they have to make as well, and in order to do our due diligence, I want everyone to have the opportunity to have that conversation with each of the vendors who provided information. I also want to allow for additional discussion. One of the things that I had mentioned to the mayor is typically our city functions are held in the evening, so our constituents are slightly different than those who attend the county meetings, with those meetings being in the morning. So we wanted it to be another open discussion, not only for our council, but for any of the residents. This is a big impact on all of North Brewster County. We did lose someone who was a resident who lived here, who grew up here, and then, you know, we're kind of at a loss, and then we're bringing in what I don't want to say are strangers, but as new friends coming into a small community, we want to ensure that we have the opportunity to follow up with additional questions, to follow up with those little things that maybe stood out at the last meeting. They're like, no, I want a little more detail. I want a better understanding. Because we are a small rural community, we are very limited. We are, what I say, out in the middle of nowhere, so access to things is a lot harder. And so we want to ensure that as we go through this process, we want to make sure that we have all the cards on the table, all the information, and it doesn't matter where it's coming from, the county or from the city, the ultimate goal is our community. It's our residents. I know the focus with the last conversation, of course, was distance and location, and then being in the rural areas, and can your ambulances handle this? We're not in rural when you're focused on just the city. Both entities have to make a very important decision, so I wanted it to be available for everyone to have this discussion and give our current city council the opportunity to ask you and follow up with questions as well. After the meeting on the fourth, my brain just exploded with, hey, I should have asked this, or what about this? Or this comment was made, but I didn't follow up on it. Things that I think of not only as a representative of the city, but also as a member of my community. It's dear to me. My mom has been taken to the hospital multiple times for massive heart attacks. So for me, I want to know that that service is the quality I would like it to be for my own family. So I thought this was a perfect opportunity. We're both making the meetings. We're both reaching out. We're both having discussions. We know you can provide the services based on the information you provided us, but now we wanted to follow up a little bit more. Some of the questions may be repeats. Councilwoman Rodriguez was not there, Councilman Johnson was not present. So it gives them the opportunity to ask the things that they may have thought of watching and reading the material that's been provided. So we do have a few new faces in the crowd who may have additional questions and have that conversation. We do have some public comments. It's a big service for our community, being how small we are. I don't know if you want to jump into questions, if you want to allow for some public comment first?
Yeah, we'll take the public comments first, but I'd like to make a point here. This is in no way indicative that the city wants a separate contract. This is both a joint with the county and the city, because I've heard the comments, well, it's they hold their own private meeting. No, it's not a private meeting. It's for the general public, like the interim manager said. We have our meetings in the evening, so it allows people to get off work, get on Zoom, and what have you, and listen in to what's going on. So I just want to make that statement to clarify some comments that had been made. So with that, we're going to move forward, and we'll start with the questions. Would you guys introduce yourselves first?
Yes, my name is Joshua Ziegel. I am the Vice President of Business Development in the 911 Division at City Ambulance Service.
My name is George Trevino. I'm Senior VP of Business Development for City Ambulance Service.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Dr. Curtis Science. I'm a senior partner in many years. I'm a PhD doctor.
Many frequently with emergency as well.
Thank you.
Randy Wideman, Regional Director for GMR, AMR, Integrated Both Area Ground. And I've got my teammates Bobby Sanchez, who's Regional Director for Arrow Care, as well as Jane Stefka, who is our Regional Business Director on Zoom.
Thank you, sir. Okay, we'll start with the questions, public comments, and we've got one. Julie Gonzalez.
Hello, my name is Julian Gonzalez. I'm from Wardport. And I'm sorry I didn't attend earlier meetings, but I do have a suggestion. Because we are a small community, and it seems that whenever we go to the hospital, we wind up having to go somewhere else. And if you don't have insurance to fly somewhere, then you wind up having to spend a lot of money to get there. The time involved in going, though, is about the same amount of time that you use to drive down. By the time they get you to the airport, pick you up here, put you on the plane, fly you to Midland, Odessa, or wherever, then they still have to get another ambulance to take you to the hospital, unless you're going in a helicopter. At any rate, my suggestion would be for the ambulance service be directed by the, not the police, the fire department. And that way, we can train people here, and they will respond to us, and we'll be able to take people to where they need to go a lot faster. That way, we also get to use people that are here in town. And it is a learning process, and I realize that people have a tendency to get trained here, and then they wind up having to move somewhere else because they're going to get more money. So the other suggestion would be for the public, the City of Alpine, to pay a certain amount, $10, $5, or whatever it may take to support the fire department and the emergency service. And that way, everybody will be assured that here you're going to get service, which is where the majority of the people are. But I'm not leaving the county out, because we all, whether it's police or there's a fire and it's not inside the city, we all spread ourselves out and try to help. So it's not like we're trying to separate ourselves, but we do need to do something where everybody is participating and paying, and have a little responsibility in what we need. And we all need the services, the police and the fire department and ambulance and hospitals. So those are my suggestions, and maybe we can build on them if you feel like those are efficient. But like I said, I'd be willing to pay a certain fee so that we can make it happen.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. Okay, anybody else from the audience? Okay, so one of the concerns I have is with the price of gasoline going up almost overnight, how is that going to impact the charges that they'll charge the city and the county?
Before we jump into the questions, just so that the vendors, we're going to kind of do it like a roundtable. That's why I had you all up front instead of one at a time with the podium. That way, each of you can take the opportunity to address it, and it's applied to all three of you and not, you know, one-on-one. So you can choose who goes first.
I'll be happy to answer that question, Mayor. Thank you for the opportunity. As we discussed with the task force that put this together for the county and the city, we're not changing what we said and we agreed to in our discussions with the task force leader, I guess you would say, is Greg. We agreed to what the county and the city are currently paying, and we agreed to do it for that much. And nothing's going to change for us, and nothing will change as far as gas prices concerned.
Thank you very much.
So, yes, I agree with this gentleman exactly what he was saying as well. Unfortunately, when the bulk of what we get compensated is Medicare or Medicaid, and in these scenarios, it doesn't, they pay what they pay. If they don't upper down anything along that line, so we basically do put inflation into that as well. Now, with that being said, you know, if there's opportunities for us to kind of think outside a little bit and say, okay, fine, is there an opportunity for us to participate in a bulk purchase with the county or the city to try to work with that as well? That's, that could be, we can have discussions with that as well, but with that being said, it doesn't really change what we've agreed to.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Pretty much the same thing as these gentlemen spoke of. It doesn't change any of our pricing. I know with the inflation of gas prices going up, we kind of push back on our logistics department to work with our fleet services that we have for our credit cards, for all of our fuel, to work those discounts in for us, so we don't get that big burden of that increase right away. You know, we want to make sure that we can keep our prices down, so we have that full department that manages our entire fleet.
Okay, another question I had was, last time we met was, since we don't have any EMTs here, and y'all said you bring in here on a rotational type basis, and you put them in lodging. Now, how's that cost of the lodging going to impact the pricing?
It's not going to impact the price of lodging. For us, we're going to want to work with the city and preferably rent out of the fire department, so we can house our crew there, so they can be integrated directly with the fire department, and that then changes from what you have now. We don't want a big hiccup to go out there, and everything has to, everybody has to learn something. You know, we want to just go ahead and continue that flow on. And if we have to put up additional units, that there is no available lodging for currently immediately, that we look into it, you know, if we have to put a modular building out there, if we have to rent out from a hotel, because we love to support local anytime we possibly can. We definitely work with the city. If you have any more available spaces, that's we need to work with you on that as well.
Okay, so again, no difference in the cost associated with that as well, the short term and long term, right? So if we have to take over the service tomorrow, we have people that we can bring in, and we can work with that. But ultimately, then what about the day after tomorrow, right? So as the gentleman had spoke earlier about working with citizens and trying to bring them up and make them EMTs and make them paramedics, and really kind of focus in that area, is this something that's a good thing as well? We are looking for a forever home, if you will. And so we've actually had the opportunity to drive around. We've actually looked at some different properties and different things. We are interested in the fire department as well. But ultimately, you know, we just have to see how everything is going to kind of come together, and realistically, what's going to work best for everybody.
So, okay. Yeah, no, no cost increase from our side. We'll continue to work with local leadership, county leadership, so that we're doing the right work for the citizens of our community, whether that's, as we discussed in the first meeting, whether that's, you know, work with the fire department and take on the build-out project, whatever that looks like, we're happy to do that and to partner with the local county and city to make that happen and to provide that, those quarters that are necessary to provide the care to the community.
Okay, I should have asked him about a question. At the fire department, that second floor is not, does not have any cubicles in it, does it? You know?
No, no, it does not yet. As a escape ladder, there would be a lot of attic ladder, really, according to Stephanie Elmore. We need an outside egress as well as a correct ladder inside, and a lot of build-out.
Right.
There'd be, there's a lot of that money invested.
Okay, so at present, that's not feasible then? There you go.
I said barb.
Okay, I just wanted to, you know, kind of clarify that, because I had already heard that there was some building in there, construction, so.
What's that? That could be easily done.
Yeah.
And converted it into little apartments.
Most of the mayor's questions have revolved around the cost and whether it'll be going up or that type of thing. For those of us who are not aware, I know that you all have agreed to the amount that we were being charged previously. For how long will that be? And if it's for only a set amount of time, what?
We really don't know what to expect, to be honest with you. Apparently, for many years, they've been operating the ambulance service. But we do know that we're capable and willing to come in and give it 200%, if that makes any sense. So hopefully, what the goal is, is that if we do what we do, and we do it well, the cost will go down for you, right? So, but the reality is, is that's kind of a hard question to ask until we know what tomorrow looks like and the day after. So I think we've kind of committed to, I think, a year or these, or a budget, if you will. And then from there, definitely, we can sit down and say, okay, fine, our damage, your damage, I think we've all kind of mentioned that in the past, as far as, we have nothing to hide. We just definitely want to make this work, and do what's best for everybody.
Thank you.
I'll go ahead and say, for us, we don't see any price changes in the near future for us, but we're not going to tell you that that's not going to happen. We're going to sit down and work with you hand in hand, look at all the numbers, look at all the analytical data, look at what the hospital's pushing out. So that helps subsidize our costs for the city as well. If they can incur some of those, that volume over to us, then we're not going to have to charge a higher subsidy. We want to make sure that we're going to take care of the citizens of Alpine. We want to make sure that that doesn't include a cost increase, that that doesn't include a tax hike. And before any of those things would ever happen, we would get with the city to say, okay, this is what we're looking at. This is what hurdles that we're facing. How can we work on this project together? And it not be a, hey, we're going to give you a heads up 30 days before something needs to happen. It's going to be at the beginning of a renewal of a contract to say, okay, at the end of this 12 months, these are the changes that we would like to see, or these are the issues that we're currently having, that we need to collaborate together to come up with a resolution. So to speak to that, coming from a small community here in Texas, I totally understand the financial responsibility that the city has for the citizens of Alpine. And we agreed that we would work with the current subsidies for the physical year. And as we stated in our meeting last week, it would be totally transparent with all of our data and as our finances, so that we work together to come up with what's the best for the community. I don't know what that number would look like if we had to go up or if we had to go down. I don't know that. All I know is what we agree to currently for the physical year. That's on the books for you guys, and we'll honor that. And going forward, we've had several other communities of this size where, you know, it might be less from a subsidy perspective. I can't give you a number today, but what I can tell you from myself to you, to you as a city council, is I will be transparent as possible. We'll show you our finances at any given time, and I think that's the important part when you're running a city entity, is that you provide the best patient care, that you do it safely, and that you do it physically, or, you know, financially feasible for the community. So that would be our stand on where we would go with the monetary situation.
Okay, yes, sir.
We have two missions. We have a financial mission. We have a healthcare mission. We're accomplished. Both of them merge. Both of them depend on each other. The success of one depends on the other. Our primary mission is to provide good medicine, to elevate the care, you know, in our, in this community. Everything else, it's our model of our company. Good medicine is good business. And we're all, we're all conscious of the fact that, you know, we don't want to pass that, you know, cost to the citizen. We actually want to allocate that cost, and that's going to make us richer, to actually move the community goals forward, you know, get to the best picture.
Okay. Any questions here?
Well, I'm going to, I have a question of curiosity. I'm going to start with Lee, being a bird as Mustang, he would understand that more than anybody else here, I guess. But why do y'all want to come down Alpine and provide this service? And I would ask all of you that. We're just a small town in West Texas.
This is, this is the heart and soul of America. This is 100% what I'm about, to be honest with you. I love it here, to be honest, coming in and having the opportunity to sit here and have a frank discussion about what the future of the city and county looks like. That's awesome. And to be here, to be able to do that is completely awesome. You know, you guys had, in your ambulance that was here, ran for 20 years, 20 plus years, and really set up the legacy, really.
Okay.
Even longer. So I just.
He was the least chief for over.
So, but really set up a good legacy, right? And he set up some good stuff, and again, we want to expand on that and continue to grow, and obviously, just make a good home. So this is what our company is about, if that makes sense. So this is where we feel that we can do the best, what we do. And, you know, patient care and just doing, going to the hospital, working with that, whether it's taking, going to the houses and working with people. There's so much stuff out there that is just amazing, that programs that we can bring in and work with everybody on. So that's why, because this is, this is an avenue for, I guess, just the future. We can actually say, yes, we're doing a good, a really good thing for a really good community.
Okay.
For me, I would say, why not Alpine? You know, why can't we give the same level of service that we give in these larger cities to some of the smaller communities? Why can't everyone demand the same level of care everywhere within the state? You know, your success is our success at the end of the day, and we are not just your normal vendor company. We're just not coming here to plug and play, to grow our portfolio a little bit bigger. We're coming into the community to be a part of it, to grow with it. A lot of our employees are within this area. We've managed to push into the Crane County community area, which is kind of similar to this one. And we managed to change their style of medicine out there in the area to give a higher level of service to the citizens that they already deserve. And if we have that capability to offer that, why not? I say everyone deserves that same level of service across the city. So I'm very passionate about rural healthcare, because that's how I grew up. And without that, your community will disappear without healthcare. And it's important to be able to provide that level of service to the community. And I am very fortunate enough to work for a company, and we get stones thrown at us because we're large, but we are doing the right work for the communities that we serve throughout Texas and throughout the nation. And we're already here. So why wouldn't we partner with the city and the county to provide the ground for the citizens? They deserve the best, and that's what we're here to provide.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Why build a special care unit in Mexico? Why build a special care transport system, you know, platform? Why look into, one reason is the right thing to do. It is actually what somebody else should be doing for us. Therefore, we're going to pick it up and do it ourselves. We changed, I personally changed my motto in 22 years of yet to care. I used to be in an ivory tower where, you know, we said, let the patient come to us. Okay, if they want to receive the best care, let come to us, and we're going to provide the best care. I changed it 180 degrees. We're going to go to them. We're going to make a difference to them face to face. That's what we hear. You know, anybody can make a living anywhere, you know, for the most part, you know? But it's about making a difference, making a change, making it count, building a legacy, passing it forward. Why do we have to go to Mexico and our expertise? You know, that's a different country. We have to change everything that we can possibly change. We only have one life, and we're all going to be judged on what we leave behind for the rest of us.
That's true.
You know, y'all made a good point, because, you know, we do have an aging community here, and we need good qualities of service at a fair price, okay? We're not forced to act or paid, because we're, you know, they do have the oil wells and stuff like that. We are hindered by just what the local economy provides us. So that's what we're looking is to get somebody that can be responsible, that does care about the community, and will be local also, okay? And, yes, sir.
I was just going to make mention that you're talking about being present. One of the things that we discussed Friday of last week was that we have the ability to provide nurse navigation and also telehealth, to where we're not just transporting because we can transport. That patient may not need to be transported by ambulance to the hospital. That patient can get what he or her needs through nurse navigation or telehealth, and we're not making that transport. So we're being physically responsible to this community by adding those added benefits to the service that we provide. And we are currently doing that in a lot of our counties now here in Texas, where we're providing nurse navigation as well as that telehealth piece.
Okay, thank you.
With the amount of territory that y'all will be covering, and the big need for higher level of care, how many units, how many trucks? I don't know if you call them trucks, ambulances, would you all have available for us? Would y'all be able to handle, say, a call down south, and a local call, and then a transfer?
I'll go ahead and start for that one. For us, we want to be able to match the same amount of trucks that you currently have in the area now, because we don't want to go backwards on. Our goal is also to bring an additional unit into the market that's going to specialize in just managing the transfers out of your mobile hospital, where that truck would be that additional unit on top of those two, in case this one goes way up north, this one goes way down south. Now, who's going to cover? Most of the time, everyone has a mutual aid agreement with all the adjoining communities, because it's just, you know, it's a thing. Everyone helps and manages each other's calls and helps out, because we're all in this together. But for us, we have that additional unit up to say, okay, we're going to pull you off that transfer site, and you're going to be now the third out truck, so we can manage an additional call that comes out of the air. And the way our system has been expanded further and further west, we have closer units within the area to say, okay, this area is constantly peaking up around this time or these days and these weeks. We need to start putting additional peak units out there. So then we can say at the end of the fiscal year, okay, your volume went up X amount. And so we're going to actually propose to add an additional permanent unit on, or add in a squad unit on a supervisor unit to start intercepting some of those calls. So we don't dip any service for the community, and those ETAs stay at a very low.
I think one comment that I think the three companies stated last week was that if we have an event, the rodeo, football games, that you all would have a sitting ambulance at those venues, so we wouldn't compromise the other two ambulances.
Right. So then you look at those events, guess what? More people are coming in. So not only a unit dedicated to that, maybe another unit dedicated just to the fact that we have another thousand people that's going to be. So, you know, there's just such a big opportunity to kind of just look at things and just immediately grow. The system status is a living and breathing thing for lack of better words. So if you look over time, you'll see that things typically calls trend. And so for the day, you might have two ambulances or three ambulances. For a night, you might drop down to two ambulances. It just kind of depends on the, if that makes any sense. So I think the expectation is, is yes, at least two ambulances, and then the ability to upstart more if needed, with also in addition to mutual aid and working with the surrounding areas for that as well. Yeah, I think we would continue to offer what's being offered today with your current provider, which certainly will, I understand, you know, that Greg and them, how they're operating it, is they have a one primary truck that goes out, and then another, you know, that can first respond. And so we're happy to provide that, as well as we have to work with the hospital to understand what, you know, Rick in that hospital's needs are from a transport perspective.
Uh, but we have units in the area, uh, that we can, uh, respond to and provide that interfacility today, uh, if needed. Uh, so I don't wanna speak prematurely without having Rick present to communicate what that looks like for him and his hospital. Uh, but I will tell you that, uh, we are currently doing it in Reeves County and we're, we're, we're doing it in other counties, uh, in Odessa, uh, McKinney, Ouran, Crane, um, and El, and San Angelo. So, uh, we can do it, and if he agrees to it, we can help him out as well. So that's not a problem at all from my perspective.
Is Rick on Zoom?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, and, you know, I'm asking questions that were asked last week, but for the benefit of our council that wasn't there, I just wanna make sure for clarity that they understand. So, yeah. Any more questions?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Have any of your else's companies had any kind of legal issues?
I would say almost every single company you're gonna ask are gonna have their legal issues, especially in the healthcare industry. Um, someone's always gonna constantly have a complaint. Our biggest goal is to address all of those issues as quickly as we possibly can. And with our company, you're always gonna get the top administrative side to respond to every single issue. If you need a face inside the community, we're there immediately to handle anything. We don't want to put anything on the city shoulders to have to bear everything on there. Yes, we have.
So hopefully, when you need legal issues, you meet a contract with you all. So, um, so we've been fortunate so far. Um, it's, but with all due respect, it is so easy for somebody to make allegations, find an attorney to take, take a project, for lack of better words, and, and go down that road, um, with other companies that have had that, or have had that work. But as of right now, um, we've been very fortunate. So.
I'm gonna answer that question as honestly as I can. Uh, in my region, we have not had any, but we are a company that's fifty states, and I can't speak to what's going on in other, other cities or other counties. I just know what I'm responsible for. Uh, and as, uh, as of right now, I don't know of any legal issues, uh, to my knowledge.
And as y'all said, you know, it's, it's in medicine, doctors, uh, everything in medical field, suits are, you know, diamond dozen. That doesn't affect your all's business, does it? I mean, your everyday business of providing service and all that, that continues during the time.
Absolutely.
I'd actually like to follow up with Chris's comment, um, company Rodriguez. Um, the, the, the legal, everyone has done their, their, their research, their due diligence, and then there is articles and there are suits filed throughout the state and unfortunately, the United States, um, with the healthcare system. And for me, we're, we're bringing in new friends, and I'd like a little bit better understanding of your hiring practice. Um, I, I wanna take the local side off the table, if you, if you're willing to have this conversation. Um, we know that the prior provider struggled, struggled with staffing. We know that he could not keep a full staff at all the time. Um, they ran, you know, double shifts, that they did everything they could for the community. We don't have a strong staff. And I know Turling was been utilizing theirs and Mr. Huntington is present to, to help fill in for North Brewster County. If you were to get the position, could you explain to us your hiring practices to ensure that the individual you hire isn't coming with a background that unfortunately I've, I've, I've been privy to with, with my research, um, and how you would handle if you found out someone had a background that was just poor quality, poor service for, for the healthcare industry and, and that process moving into a new city?
Absolutely. Um, for us, throughout our hiring process, uh, we do a lot of due diligence. We wanna make sure that they do go through a full background check. We run their background department, state health services who currently issues out the licenses for your E M Ts through paramedics as well. Okay, yeah, you're already checking, good. And then they have to go through a full educational test and process as well. Uh, they have to do written tests and actual physical hands-on skills testing. And that ranges a little bit of everything from being able to innovate patients to running IVs on patients. Everybody is required to have their certifications updated, uh, their current ACLS, their current PALS, their current BLS. And those stands for advanced cardiac life support, pediatric advanced life support, and your basic life support. And then everyone is mandated to go through continuing education as well to make sure that their skills are up to date. So we don't have any issues or any thought points with them. And we also do a monthly monitorant of any certifications have changed. Because if anything, incidents are to happen outside of the workplace, we're not, they're not gonna report it right away, you know? So we do that monthly background check to make sure there aren't any criminal history changes. Their license hasn't passed, it hasn't been pulled to make sure that we minimize any liability on all sides of the business.
As far as we're concerned, um, the exact same thing, we do have the background checks, that type of stuff is standard. Um, hiring for communities, um, and, and just being involved in EMS and working with different people, what we're trying to do is hire the right person, right? So very confident when it comes to, um, practicing medicine, right? But then on the other side, really overall, the people in good fit. And, and so I know some people that I would trust if I got hurt to be able to care for me, and, and I know they would do a wonderful thing, but just overall aren't, aren't great. The, the way they talk, the way they act, the way they're just really excited, kind of secluded. And, and it was to say that might not be the right fit for here. So it's gotta be kind of a good mixture of both, right? So, um, as we start through the process, we have a test, we do have, um, the evaluations and hands-on and stuff. And then after that, we, um, we actually start working with them on, um, writing with us, kind of making sure that, um, they're not just bookmark, but they can actually put it to their hands. And then, and then outside of that, also in addition to is actually the way they communicate with everybody. Um, from the patients, patients' family, to the nurses and the physicians on the receiving side and everything the whole way through, and just make sure that it's, for lack of words, a, a, a good fit. Um, and then in addition to that, um, you know, like we talked about the, the initial training and stuff, but ongoing training is so important as well. So, you know, if you only deliver a baby once every ten years, well, guess what? We need to be working with that at least a month or every other month or something along that line. Um, and the way that we do that is through the quality. We actually look at things, we look for outfalls, we look for just different things that we can actually say, okay, fine, what do we need to work on? And, and, and then we just continue to evolve and go from there. So a, a, again, really, I think the community and how, and what we see is the answer to that question, if that makes any sense. So again, you know, we just wanna hire, um, again, you know, local, I mean, we really believe that's the answer. And whether it's, if you're not doing anything today and, and tomorrow you're a paramedic, I mean, we're gonna work with you to get there. So.
Yeah, just along the lines of, uh, my constituents here that, that, uh, you know, we, we do the background check, we do the DISH, the state of Texas background, uh, through their certifications. Uh, once they are through, they do a panel interview. Uh, once they go through the panel interview, then they get turned over to our human resource department and recruiting department. Uh, and they do a gamut of things, uh, from, uh, background checks and things of that nature. Uh, if they're offered the position, then we put them with a preceptor or a field training officer, uh, and they have to do certain things according to their certification that they are currently residing at, whether that's a basic, an intermediate, or a paramedic. Or we do have some that are critical care, uh, paramedics, uh, so a little bit higher level of care from just your regular paramedic. And, and through that, uh, if they, you know, don't meet the mustard, or they don't, they don't make the cut, or if there's an attitude problem, or if there's an issue from that perspective.
I do honor the love, uh, and that's love our patients, care for our patients, and serve our patients and their community. So that's really kind of our motto from our region, and that's really kind of what we're trying to do. Uh, I'm new to the, uh, ground portion of the AMR world. A long tenure air medical person, uh, but this is now integrated, so I do have both air and ground. So I'm trying to bridge the ground side to kind of clear up with what we do, uh, from an, uh, air perspective on our in addition to everything else that, that we mentioned, you know, we had that wellness program, as part of, you know, able for them to keep up in for duty in medically, but more importantly, in motion. And, you know, there is a burnout component that, uh, that I think that people are now becoming really well aware with COVID and everything else, but this is something that's been going on for a long time in medicine. Um, transference, you know, whenever, you know, we picked up a patient that it looks like me, it looks like my son, it looks like somebody else, and it really affects us in many different ways. So you need to kind of get them to fight those, those issues and, and prevent them and, and actually anticipate them. So at the end of the day, we're trying to find people, we're trying to hire, you know, hire process, and we give the community by everybody else on this. So, you know, if I'm doing something that is not hooked up by the rest of the team, the team is gonna call up and say, like, hey, what's wrong? You know, you have to actually get, that's right, dude.
I wanna ask J D a question. Aren't y'all doing something through the district with the high school for nursing or medical care or something like that?
In the high school is, uh, they will be starting a CNA program. So not necessarily tied into EMS.
I wonder if it could be kind of interwoven with EMS. J D is the executive director of the Big Ben Regional Hospital District, and Greg is one of their directors. And I just saw maybe if y'all could somehow or another coordinate that activity with the high school to benefit the EMS people, it, it could help with local employees and certifications and et cetera.
That's a valid point, and that's one of the things that we did the study with us in the last meeting was where we do an earn-to-learn, where we actually are paying folks to go to school, uh, and paying them to go to school so that when they get certified, then they would be committed to us for X amount of time. Uh, but we're providing that schooling, uh, for them in, in some capacity, whether that's with a local college. We do have partners where we partnered up with high schools where they have that in their education format, where they are doing EMS as a class. And once they graduate or they, uh, get certified, um, they're able to, uh, apply, you know, with us. Uh, so we are doing that, and we are coming into communities where we're offering it, um, because there are no folks in EMS anymore. It, it's, they're, they're not standing in line like they used to. Uh, I made a comment to, in the last, uh, county commissioners meeting where only twenty-three percent of paramedics are actually writing patient reports. And that's a drastic decrease from what it was years ago. Um, but we are, we have to do, we have to make our own. Uh, and we're working with, uh, you know, local colleges and local high schools in order to accomplish that goal. I wanna say, uh, just one quick thing, uh, the physician made mention to mental health. Uh, that's very important to us. I believe it's in my present, both of my presentations that I presented to you guys, uh, through the RFQ as well as the county commissioners. We have a whole department that's dedicated just to that, and it's called G M R Life. And G M R Life, uh, responds when bad things happen, and we are in an industry where our folks are committing suicide on a daily basis. And in order to do that, you have to have the resources in order to care for those internal families and the external family. And so we have a department as, as well as the therapy dogs that respond at a moment's notice when it's happened. And unfortunately, I'm speaking from experience because I've had three in the past nine months. And it's very devastating to the team. I just wanna mention that because I think it's important that we, as the providers in these companies, have to provide that service to our clinicians and our family.
Y'all have the same program?
Yeah, with us, uh, we're able to work with the behavioral health side. We work with a lot of different facilities on behavioral health to integrate that in with our employees and through our H R department to make sure that we have that debrief after any major incident. Like, these gentlemen spoke as well, uh, it's very important to us, you know, uh, the company, these employees of ours, they are the bread and butter of everything for everybody. They're the first to interact with the patient, and they're our best marketer at the end. Because they're either gonna make or break our company. We can come in here and promise the world to everybody, but at the end of the day, it's who we actually put boots on the ground with. Who's actually going into that patient's house, who's going into that hospital. So it's the utmost importance to all of us to make sure that they're taken care of to the utmost level.
Absolutely. So I would say, not to the extent that AMR has people, but absolutely, yes, we, we, we do have things that happen. We do get our people in contact with whoever they need to be speaking with, and, and, and that is obviously, so from all sides. So, um, most generally, um, we're there, we know, we cry with them, you know, we laugh, we do everything along the line. So it's not, it, you know, their life is our life, right? So, um, we just live it and go through that. So, and I will say also that AMR does do a very good job when it comes to that. Been going to different conferences and they brought their dogs, there's beautiful animals, and just to write, write stuff, so.
Well, we're on those lines. What's your policy on substance abuse?
So, um, yeah, that's kind of an interesting one, right? So, and, and, and the reality is, it's, it's pretty much a zero tolerance. So, um, we can't have people, um, drinking and driving, we can't have people, um, impaired practitioners by any means. But then also on the other side, we know that there's a, a rule out there that, um, you know, these things are put in front of them, and, and if however they do, I guess, let's say, drink or do something, and they have a problem, and they come to us with a problem, again, you, you know, their family, we're gonna do whatever we need to get them past this. And then obviously, for lack of better words, trust but verify that, um, you know, it's stopped. That makes any sense. So.
Yes, what I was asking is if someone has a drug abuse problem, do y'all randomly drug test your employees?
Absolutely. Yes. It's part of the hiring practices, and then after that, absolutely, yes.
Okay.
And it's random, and it's also if there's any incidents that occur, if there's, uh, any major issues in the new hiring process as well. So, and that goes not only with drug testing, but alcohol, breathalyzer testing. So we wanna make sure that we minimize liability all the way around the board.
Right. In addition to, you know, in the industry, but there's several numbers of get put in as part of, you know, what's the incidence of having an event? You know, an event meaning something that you didn't plan for that happened to the ambulance, wreck, the helicopter, or anything else. So when those particular incidents happen, we need to make sure that the person that the way of operating, you know, that they quit there at that time, you know, they weren't actually tested, you know, to make sure that, that, that it was not something that it was focusing. So there's a random component that is actually a three component.
Right. Okay, there is an asset because the company I came from would do the random, or if you had an incident with the vehicle, automatic would be a drug test.
That is an automatic, yeah, for us, if there's an incident, it's, it's both air and ground, that they have that ability to do random at any given time. Um, we, we run a just culture, culture, if you will. If you're not familiar with it, I would ask you to take a look at it because it really allows us to walk through, uh, whatever incident or issue has come up, uh, and find out whether it was a accident or a, if, if it was intentional. And so we run through that on the just culture algorithm, uh, and come to the best senses to, if the person needs the help, uh, it's no different than the board of nursing, and we provide that help to them, but immediately, you know, off and out. Uh, and making sure that we do the right word. Uh, where we're monitoring them. They have a digit, a code that they enter in to get into the narcotics, and it's only theirs, it's nobody else's. We can pull those codes and see, uh, what's going on, but we monitor that rigorously.
Okay.
There's a human component that can, if you really think about the idiosyncrasies of how those checks happen, that can over, you know, can actually suffice to overlook, okay, even those processes. So, if, you know, there's, there's several things that, you know, we look into it as far as, you know, also keep that compliance level up. Uh, we understand, you know, and I'm part of the, uh, uh, major disciplinary committee, you know, for physicians, you know, and we understand that we're all human, you know, and you'll be surprised what the, the things that we need to kind of like this, you know, uh, but there's a human component also as far as, you know, what triggers those issues.
Right. Right.
You said to have the checks and balances in place, correct? So just to ensure that.
And I think that's something that's really important and that reason I asked was because, I mean, your your employees are holding people's lives. Their hands and I want to ensure that our citizens of the city and the county, you know, are safe in being transported or being at. And when they're being medically administered, that they're, you know, that they're being treated under a person that's conscious and knows what he's doing.
Well, the person's inability to to be able to pay play a role in whether you decide to do transfers or something of that nature.
Absolutely, absolutely. We don't do wild bioses on the dial nine one one. We accept the call as it is.
Okay, because.
You know, it it doesn't matter, I mean, we don't, we don't, all of our communication center have E M D, so emergency dispatcher. Dispatchers and we take the call and we roll the truck. It doesn't matter to us.
Because we are, we are somewhat, we are somewhat close to the border and we do get a lot of traffic. You know, Alpine is the first hospital you're gonna hit and we do get, get a lot of people, you know, that they're not gonna have the ability to pay. And once they're treated, you might never be able to find them again for collections.
Yeah, that's absolutely, and we've experienced that firsthand down in Presidia. We were called for a neonate, a baby. And we sent our airplane and the covenant women and children's transport team to pick up that child. You know, and that's the right thing to do. We were not, we were not discussing whether he or she could could pay. We, it it's out of the expertise of what Arrow Care does. From a neonate perspective, and we sent the right appropriate team down there to pick up that child and provide care and they flew that child back to local. To where that great, that 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 mom and that baby were taken care of by government children.
So it won't, it won't, it won't hinder the decision to say. It can be done by by an ambulance and the family wants to get there faster and the plane, either going that route. That's not some, even using the plane's not something that that'll come into.
In emergency scenarios, no ma'am, we're gonna do what's right for the patient one hundred percent of the time. That's correct, right? Now, if if you want us to take grandma to New York because of the fact she doesn't want to sit in the car. And if they want to pay for it, they're more and more, you'll be surprised how many people think that Medicare will pay for that. We we have to kind of have that conversation, but but sure enough, no ma'am, and 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 you know, the reality is, is if it's if it's an emergency. We're committed a hundred percent.
Mean up a table is the way that I see it. Good medicine is good business. And it always will be, you know, so we worry about taking care of the patient. And somebody else will worry about their financial matters, you know, it doesn't matter.
And that's how our medics are trained as well. They're never going in there hassling patients about the billing side. You know, they're gonna request their insurance information if they have it and that's it, that's all that medic is gonna ask and the rest is patient care at that. With our company as well, we do have the benefit of having an in-house billing company to where we're not also going to ruin someone's credit because they did have to go and they did have to get a bill. We're not gonna hassle them, we're not gonna chase after them, we're not gonna ruin their opportunity to buy a house or buy a car. It's not fair to them that they had to call an ambulance, you know, we want patients in the community to feel comfortable calling nine one one if they need an ambulance. Not debating, well, am I gonna be able to afford that this month? No, that that should never have to be a question. That's horrible that that is even a question in the world that we live in today is can I afford? And we all factor that in, you know, each one of our groups did when we looked at the numbers here to say, okay, we're gonna make it comfortable to where we can afford to run those calls as well. You know, and because everyone deserves the same level of care, it shouldn't change regardless of their ability to pay.
I know on the air side of the world, actually, we have to pay the ambulances. I mean, there's many, many ambulance services that won't even show up, it doesn't matter, insurance, no insurance, nothing along that line there. You know, two thousand bucks, you know, and if if you want us there, that's what you have to do. And so goes even beyond, we're actually taking in even more money out of our pocket to ensure that the patient is getting what they need to get.
Yeah, we kind of got used to the scudders that that a lot of times if somebody called nine one one, they'd go to their home and guess, no, says I'll find out, you know. And they would never charge them for that trip charge, so.
So I actually want to follow up on that. I did have a citizen bring a couple of questions. And it's not just the financial impact on the city and the county, but it is on on our citizens. And insurance doesn't always cover everything, everyone, Alpine is unique. We get billed for all different aspects of the the healthcare, whether it be from the hospital, the ambulance service, the the specialized doctor who came in. Every little aspect of it and we've come to know this. But their question really was around to provide kind of the process for the billing and and the reason that this individual brought it up was. They had thought they had taken care of all of their business and fifteen months later, they got a bill from the ambulance service. So for them, it was a shock because they thought they were, everything had been taken care of. And so they were concerned with like the timeline and you all have mentioned that you have in-house billing systems. Could you kind of explain more of the the start to the finish in the timeline that is? But also as part of it, and the other side of it was is, is it a flat service for all? Like, is it, if I call, I'm having a massive heart attack and I'm gonna need a higher level of care, is it the same as if I've had a football game and I broke my arm and you're taking me, you know, to the hospital? Does the different types of care being provided determine the charge that is being charged to the individual? And then along lines of Mayor Ramos, she, the indication was a trip charge. If no trip, is there no charge? So we do have on occasion individuals who request nine one one, I mean, MS services and then they're, oh, you know what, no, I don't want to go to the hospital. So you're still responding, but there's no patient to take to the hospital, so so is that charge different or is there a charge at all? So it's kind of a very open question, but just the billing, the timeline. Is it a flat service for every time they get called out? Is there no charge if they're not utilizing the service, but they still made the phone call? And these were this individual's concern, because they've experienced it, so.
I'll throw up on this one. When it comes to the billing process, everyone's kind of timeframe is gonna be a little bit different. It's all kind of based on their builders when they actually submit that bill to the insurance company and how long they take to get a response. Some are a little bit delayed more than others. Fifteen months is a little bit far back for some people, they must have had a heavy backlog. So for us, most of the time, our bills are submitted within less than thirty days. So if there is any issues on that billing side, we have that opportunity to go through the bill process with the insurance company. And then on the billing scale rate, the billing is different. We don't want to have to charge you a flat rate and say, for instance, you're having a massive heart attack, that's gonna be one set rate. And then any additional extras that you have to do with your mileage. So but if you only broke your toe and you happen to go to the hospital, why shouldn't you get charged that set rate that's way up here? So it also scales back down as well, down to a B L S rate, which is your basic life support. Which is just your standard flat rate that's usually competitive with your Medicaid Medicare rate that has a set standard as well. So we don't want to have to charge you for extra if you're not utilizing those extra. And then on your third topic point where you said there is a no bill or a bill if they come out that there isn't a transfer. I don't know what your current set standard is, it is different depending on the community to community because it prevents abuse of the nine one one system in some areas. Or you'll have that one patient who'll call twenty times a week, even though that there's nothing that they actually need, you know, because sometimes they just need someone to say hi. You know, there's been plenty of times where it's, hey, Mr. Trevino, because I'm also a paramedic myself, you know, oh, I I just need help with this absolute, let's get you help move real quick. Because you may have not seen anybody for days, that one smile on your face may have made the difference for them. But it's also can be utilized as a deterrent for abusing the nine one one system. So if there is a heart attack going on five minutes from the station, but you're out thirty minutes away dealing with a call that it's just that normal, you know, every single Friday night we get that call. It can be utilized as a deterrent, but do we have it as a set standard?
I'd say Medicare typically sets the guidelines for, and that's unfortunately what everybody follows for the different levels. And it's based off of what you do and what you provide, right? So if if we're providing a nurse and a paramedic and and a driver, we're going from point A to point B and you need that level of care, that's obviously a lot more than than taking somebody from the hospital to their home. On a scheduled basis, if you will. So so there is that, yes, there is different rates, if if you will. And also, you know, our our intent is the sooner that you can get the call process and 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 start everything with the insurance company, the better it is for everybody. I will say that there are scenarios that you could easily be fifteen months down the road because of the fact that when you run the call. And you get you get processed, it moves to the next day you fill it. You send the information to the insurance company and then guess what? They turn around and they deny it. And then they say, well, we need this, so you provide them that and then they deny it. And then you turn around and you provide them the next thing and they deny it. And so needless to say, I can see scenarios that that is very possible, especially if the patient does have secondary insurances and different things along that line. Now, with that being said, one of the things that we've found is working in communication with the patients about certain scenarios and what's going on is obviously the the key. You know, the patients have got to be involved in that process as well because the reality is it's their benefits. And and so it's it's, you know, it belongs to them and we're just working with them to to collect and go for that. So and then the last thing, as of right now, we don't really have a mechanism for for billing, for lack of a better word, to cancel call. I know it's becoming more popular, like there's been like we basically said, in some scenarios, you know, the next thing you know, everybody's calling nine one one. And and because reality Medicare bases it off the trash. You have to actually go for lack of words, go one mile before it actually kicks in and they say, okay, fine, yes, that's reimbursed for, if you will. But also to go to somebody's house because of the fact that they think they're having a blood pressure problem or a heart rate problem or anything along that line. If they're calling and saying, hey, you know, can you stop by? That's a completely different story than calling nine one one and saying, hey, you know, we decided to party a little hard tonight and I'm drunk and. And decided to hit the wall and and needless to say, you know, I got a cut I want you to look at. So, um, so there's just a bunch of different types of scenarios that get played into it, but I will say that it is becoming a more popular thing. And hopefully not as a deterrent, for lack of better words, but just to basically have people be a little bit more responsible. You know, that they need us, we're there for them and, you know, if it's if it's not, then maybe maybe everything's okay, so.
Yeah, and I just to go along the lines, it's almost like a, you know, repeat, rewind, repeat. You know, as you go down the line here, but it's, that's that's the business that we're in, you know, unfortunately. A lot of the delays in the bills getting out to the patient is primarily an insurance problem. Not necessarily how quickly we turn that in because I'm assuming that for the most part, we're all electronic charting. So that deal is, once that chart is completed, it's sent to billing. Right then, when it hits send, it goes to the billing department. So and and we would like to have that done within twenty-four hours where they put that stamp on it and send it to the to the patient. But or to the insurance, if you will, I don't mean literally put a stamp and send it to the insurance, but electronically it's sent to the insurance. And they can drag their feet, like Lee said, probably hold it for thirty to sixty days. And then they're gonna come back and deny it for whatever reason, and I can't tell you what those reasons are, but I can tell you that they're denying it. And so then it's another thirty days and they might run through it again and it it just is a cycle that we have to deal with in healthcare. Yes, there are different rates, ALS, BLS. There there are different rates for those particular calls. There are different pricings where if we pick up a flight crew team, that's that's a whole different charge in itself. But that gets billed to the flight crew and they take care of that charge. As far as we don't make it, we're not set up to bill for. If it's a no transport call, we can, as they had discussed, as far as an abuse of the system, we don't want that. You're occupying a very precious resource and if we continually have problems, then we're gonna come to the city or to the county and go. We got a problem and we need to address what that problem is as a whole and not just take it upon ourselves to fix it. We're gonna bring it to you and share it with you so that so that we can work on it together and what's best for that particular person who seems to be abusing that. And it it happens, you know, don't let anyone tell you that it doesn't, it does all the time.
Yes, Chief.
Can I have some questions?
Um, just a couple of questions just to throw out there for y'all. Trying to see where I'm gonna start here. You talked about as far as having how many ambulances in certain, during certain times, is there a rage, a ratio for how many ambulances for populations? Really? And we talked about no getting called out. A lot of our population are elderly and a lot of our calls that we get are just lift assists. Are there calls for, or there, is there a cost to patients for lift assists? And just helping them get back in bed?
And just doing the right thing, right, by the patient.
Okay. And as far as Alpine Police Department and the and the Bruce County Sheriff's Office, we are all first responders, we're gonna get there usually. Way ahead of y'all. Is there training that y'all have available for us to continue our education in in providing first aid as far as basic life support?
Absolutely. I'd like to put a class on and make all of you P M Ts as paramedics. We already have a plan for that, so we can offer that immediately where we put you guys in a class and you can all become P M Ts and first responders.
I'm busy, whatever.
That's okay, I think I think they're driving for Mr. Hennington.
Sheriff's, Sheriff's gonna respond on that one. So.
We would be happy to do that.
Great, and so.
Yeah, absolutely, yes, yeah, we have a full education department with our company and we like to share those trade situations with everyone we work with. We want to make sure that we can go through any hiccups and bumps together and learn together. So whenever a real situation does happen, it runs soon. Okay, we could do it for the fire department as well too, whatever that looks like, like there's, there's an E C A, so that person may help drive and that's all that they can do. They don't basically get back there and help the patient, but that would be a huge help in the community at this size is to be able to get sheriff, department, police department and fire department.
My guys, yeah, some of my guys have already signed up with with Greg's team. So. Goes along on the same line. We, we have a hard time hiring. We, I found out that we ended up having to hire a lot of the locals, try to keep them to stay here. You know, I always use Alpine P D as a stepping stone, but they'll move on better places or or bigger opportunities. So hiring is is a big deal, it's 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 hard to do out here, it's hard to get good help and. You were talking about bringing people down to Alpine to work, are you, are y'all just planning on having them down? Three, a month at a time, two months at a time, three months at a time, or what's y'all's plan as far as bringing in people?
For initially for us, we want to be able to hire locally, but we do know it's gonna be a struggle initially right off the back. The healthcare industry has pretty much vanished everywhere for super high paying jobs all over the state. So for us, we're gonna be able to bring in different medics from different areas, bring them in, go through training. And most of the time, we put them on one week on, one week off. So they have that ability to travel to their job site, but also to go back home if they're not comfortable wanting to move completely from where they're at. So they have that seven days on, then they're off for three weeks most of the time. You know, and they're able to come back seven on and so forth, but we also do have varying shifts where some of our medics will do forty eights, some of them will come on and do seventy twos. With the way the industry has changed, we've had to bend to everybody's availability to make sure we can fit them in. Because I don't want to sit there and tell them, hey, I got three days available, oh, I'm sorry, that doesn't fit our shift. Well, in this market, we have this available, in this market, we have this available. And with our nine one one markets, that's only specific medics are allowed that that have that clearance and training for the nine one one side. So, okay, we can move you over here, you're comfortable here, the citizens love you, the fire department loves you, then we're gonna start scheduling on here. You know, what's your availability, what kind of shifts can we put you on? So we're flexible with everyone to make sure that it fits the bill.
Good deal.
Go ahead.
No, go ahead, we'll just.
I I believe that you do have the resources locally, to be honest. And it's just a matter of getting out, it's basically two things, a quality of life and a matter of pay, right? And so if if we're able to do what we're supposed to do and and hopefully there, we can keep making mistakes, now with that being said.
Now, with that being said, I don't think any of us have the ability, if we started tomorrow, to basically, nor would we, to say, okay, fine, yeah, you're in Key, get on the truck, we're going to drive. And you you know, we're going to bring in the people that knowns for initially, if you will. And then after that, we'll start to evolve and 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 kind of go from there. But ultimately, yeah, our challenges, as as you can imagine, is we're competing with oil, we're competing with, you know, big healthcare, we're competing with a bunch of different things. Again, if you look at that and you go to talk to the oil guys, you know, as much as they're making money, they're tired. You 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 know, and so now all of a sudden, we're starting to see a trend that they're starting to come back and say, hey, you know what? I want to go home and just relax, you know, or I want to go home and just be home and 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 kind of do that type of a thing. So as I say, we're starting to see a lot more of that when it comes to pilots, when it comes to mechanics, when it comes to medical people. So I think the trend is actually turning back for that.
Yes, sir, we we would love to hire folks locally, if there are folks to hire and work with entities that have those folks already. So I'm not going to go down to Terlingua and hire all Greg's folks. Because then we have another problem, you know, and it's we're robbing Peter to pay Paul. And we're not, we don't want to do that. We want to be good stewards of all the surrounding EMS communities. And so we would like to hire locally. And we have a department that handles the the recruiting aspect for us. And we would engage them. And we've got ways that we attract the pool of people, if you will, into the area. And so we would want to work with, you know, the fire department, the sheriff's department, the police department. To those people who might have an opportunity to work full time or part room, we'll take any of any or all of the above. The other thing, as I said in the county commissioners meeting, I can have a strike team here twenty four hours. If Greg said tomorrow that he's done, I could have a strike team here in place and in service to service the city and the county because that's what we do and because of our OEM and female tracks. So we we can do that. And those folks would be embedded in this however long we need it.
Thank you, Autumn.
Mayor, could I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
We've been discussing a nine one one contract for Alpine and also nine one one contract for North Brewster County for first response. But my understanding is that each of y'all would also have other components of service that you would provide here. Maybe ground transport from the hospital to maybe other places, maybe air transport. So if y'all could each describe what other components of service you would provide in this area. And then also comment on whether the revenue you would get from those would help mitigate potential raises in the contract for the nine one one service.
Yeah, I can I can speak to that. So our company, we have aero care, which and we provide that service to your citizens of the city and of the county. We currently provide an IFT truck to Reeves County, not because they asked for it, but because I knew it was the right thing to do. And if you want to know how we're doing in Reeves County, feel free to call Brenda or Avett or Fay and ask them because they have not had an IFT in that market in years.
What's an IFT?
Interfacility transfer truck. Yeah, so we stood up. No problem. If I talk EMS lingo, just correct, just ask me. But we we provide that that level of care, you know, to the hospital and we're happy to do that. Like I said early, if Rick needs it and wants it, we're happy to provide it to to him and and his patients there at Big Ben. One of the other things that I will say is that when we come into a market, we primarily will brand that, those vehicles, those trucks, the local community. So i- if you award us the opportunity, we'll brand it City of Alpine and Brewster County on on the vehicles. So it's representing your community. So but we do, we do service a lot of different areas from a nine one one perspective as well as the IFT perspective. But we also have a redundancy in our air medical program to where, as I stated, we we've served this community for thirty four years at Aero Care. We've continued to do that today.
So um, we were founded by a ground ambulance, to be honest. I, uh, two thousand five, had an opportunity, kind of a similar situation where they had an ambulance and then they kind of quit. And had an opportunity, I got my family and my dogs and drove over there and needless to say, here we are today. So we we do have a aircraft that we do use, King Air two hundred, King Air nineties and then two jets that we we use for medical transportation. We do have ambulances as well. And we we use basically everything between the two seamless, if that makes any sense. So the air crew can hit on the ground, ground crew. Although, like, just not all meet on air, but but that being said, basically, they're helpful, which is nice, right? And so I do have some some brochures or, you know, there's some stuff for y'all as well to talk a little bit more about our company. But we also do believe heavily in technology as well. So, you know, anything that we can do to be helpful with any sort of of stuff, whether maybe even talking to doctors on the phone. And scenarios, there's just so many possibilities out there that we're starting to kind of get involved in. So.
Yeah, but they maybe this opportunity that I see for Alpine today for the county for this region is how we're going to be able to initiate before all of us, you know, how we're going to be able to elevate the care that that the citizens are receiving today. And one one, the first step is to actually be able to mobilize them, you know, to get the right care on the right facility. But what we have been able to create from El Paso is what we call a base for children. The I think or or where we started, you know, in Cruzes, El Paso, San Antonio, Houston. So we're able to take care of a otitis media, which is an infection all the way to a heart asthma. And we make that system revolve at all different levels. So that's truly what we we have a long term to be able to provide for this community. It all starts with the little things, you know, which is about moving patients from point A to point B. But in reality, it's getting right here right now, whether you're going to be able to provide immunizations or a heart palpitation, you know, and be able to be involved in the community to be able to raise that level. You know, we actually have been doing that in Alpine for the last four years. In as far as, you know, be able to move pages back and forth, you know, to El Paso, be able to provide advice and say, okay, now we need to move this patient to Houston, you know, San Antonio, or whatever they need or for them to get the right care. We get those patients all the time and we participate on the conference to be able to provide the care for here. And we're also investing into developing a hospital system, you know, at a high level, you know, so. I I don't know if, you know, if if that's, if that answers the question, but you know, those are the things that we're able to provide, you know.
Absolutely. For us here at City Ambulance, we're going to be able to provide your ground ambulance units for you on your nine one one side. We're also going to be able to provide units for those interfacility transports from hospital to hospital. We do have fixed wing service that we launched as well. And for your rotary side, we'll be utilizing rotary with PHI. And and honestly, whoever's the best available at that moment, who can get to that patient in the quickest fashion, who has the service that that patient needs and can transport to where they need to go. We're not a company that is opposed to calling our competitor because it doesn't matter at that point. And each and every one of us is the same way. If we have to utilize our competitor for that patient, we're going to call them. You know, that that's what's most important. But like the physician said, it's about giving that higher level of care to that patient. And then I know you did kind of also ask about the financial aspect and how that affects us as well. For us, our numbers are set to where we can run the nine one one service and not run another call for any air facility transport or air transport and still be at a perfect number. So, yes, it will benefit us more, ultimately, hopefully lowering that subsidy and preventing that subsidy cost from increasing in future years by being able to utilize those interfacility transport trucks to help subsidize that cost for ourselves.
Question, you know, since whoever is chosen will be providing service for both the City of Alpine and North Brewster County. Will the charge be the same or is there is there a mileage charge, say you go to Marathon, which is thirty miles east of us?
I was going to say, the only extra charge is a lot of time when there's mileage is actually patient loaded transport. So even if we have to do that mutual aid a little bit further out, there's not going to be a different subsidy charge on that call. Unless the patient gets transferred, then they're only getting charged for their actual mileage that that truck is loaded to their drop off list.
There's no extra charge, other than the loaded miles for the patient loaded.
Okay. Yeah, and one thing I want to clarify, you know, black gap got thrown into the mix last week. Greg, can you clarify that? You handle a black gap. And in rare occasions, will the one of these folks go down there?
Yeah, we have, in the past, we have not had a mutual aid agreement with Scott or I would hope that whoever is chosen, we would have a a robust mutual aid. Our our cutoff point is pretty much Elwin Mountain. So we would come and build, but I think I can see some scenarios where these guys would be as an elder mountain and take on to the hospital, looking back in service. Because our distance is controlled.
Right. And the boundaries south of Marathon?
Well, yeah, so we technically go all the way across the park and into the East Canyon, all the way to the border patrol station. But as a general rule, with the car will respond to that first, what we do.
Okay, I just wanted to get those boundaries kind of straightened out because everybody kept saying black gap and this and then black gap is quite a ways from Alpine.
We're happy to sign any mutual aid agreement with any EMS provider that's in this area.
And then just do a handoff.
Absolutely.
I have a couple of maybe technical questions. So in in looking at, you know, I look at more of the the financial side and things, but I've learned a lot with Greg and and the task force and and understanding your licensing and how you have to report to the state. And so I did do some research and look at where each of you guys stood with the state of Texas and, you know, what providers you have, what locations you have, what they call your stations. And my question is, is this is one of the guides we've used in the past to ensure that you guys are staying in line, obviously, with the state. It also gives us the option to do that. You know what? We may have received a complaint about one of your employees and, you know, we've passed it along. But, you know, are they on that cutoff list that the state has based? I call it black balm. Because it is a a red flag for us. And so one of the things I wanted to know with the licensing is you guys are all unique. So when I looked up each one of you, emergent, you only have the one. It was just emergent. That was the only license you could pull up for an EMS provider. City ambulance, you have the one, but you are probably the largest packet with all of your locations. And then AMR has ten pages because you you license different sections. So I'm curious as to how you're going to license one, our area. Are we going to be included in your current license? I know AMR, yours, the one that is closest to us is the Valmeray Reeves location. Is it going to be a separate type of license? How are you going to go through that process? I want to ensure that as we do our our checks and balances when we hire someone, that we understand what direction you're going with the licensing as well. Because it is kind of our, you know, our background check on the vendor to make sure that there's there aren't those disciplinary actions. You know, it just depends on which one you look at and there's administrative actions. And and to have that full understanding of what direction you're looking at for our community and our region.
Can I go first against where the the smallest? So the intent is that we would not relicense this, if that makes any sense. We would report to the state that we're starting a new ground ambulance location here, which is allowable. And it's just a simple letter. And we're pretty fortunate in the fact that the gentleman with the Texas Department of State Health Services that oversees us in El Paso also oversees this area as well. So.
And for us, we would do the same. We would add a location to this and we're happy to share the license packet or the page that we turn in to the state to add a base location here.
And that would be the same for us as well. It's kind of all a set standard with Department of State Health Services. This is a new location that will open up. This is the services that we're going to be handling. And our inspection dates for us to get inspected here to go through the drug to make sure everything is up to date.
And during, of course, obviously, you're when you reach out and you update your your current licensing. If at any time you decided to make a change, how would you go about notifying each entity that you've either relicensed? And I do believe there is a process to that. If you wanted to single out this region or grow this region differently, how would you go through that process and how would you notify?
I believe it's all just standard through either electronically through the TTH websites or through a letter.
Would you notify the city and county before you decided to relicense? Because this is what, like I said, this is our background check.
So would we notify you before we chose to relicense?
If you were going to, or if you did.
So. Almost like a lot, our license renewal time day, every time we renew, we notify to kind of give our updates.
If you were to not renew, because obviously that would be part of this, but if you decided to to operate or have a completely separate license.
Yeah, absolutely. But any type of major changes like that, that the city wants to be a part of, we would always notify first to say, hey, this is what our plan is to do. If, you know, if there's no discrepancies on it, then we go to, if there are discrepancies for whatever reason, if we're having to do that, you know, we work on it together.
We we would be totally transparent, whether it's financials or reporting or issues or changing of a license. But we would not change a license if we already have a license for this area. We would not, we would not submit for a new license.
And the reason why I ask is because they didn't review and you can review any nine one one provider, by the way. Whether it's education licenses that they're holding, EMS licenses they're holding, air licenses they're holding. It's a wealth of information if you have a couple hours. But what I noticed is is really the disciplinary. And so one of my questions is kind of goes along like the complaint process. I know that unless we're constantly monitoring something, if a complaint does come in that hasn't made in Alpine and and the county have made papers worldwide, unless it comes to that level, how would you go through a complaint process that could possibly affect your licensing and that transparency?
Well, we would just work hand in hand with the state if there was an issue brought forth. And I would hope that they would bring it directly to me. If not, we have a concierge service, a third party that they can call, email, and they can respond that way. And we get that information in the blind. We don't know who sent it. We don't know where it came from. But if there is a need for us to contact that individual or that party, that information is provided to us in order to do that. But we're going to be totally transparent, no matter what the situation is.
And that's likewise for us as well. Everything comes down to transparency and transparency and accountability for us. You know, we want y'all to keep us accountable with all situations and all complaints coming in. We work with Department of State Health Services as well. If there are any complaints that come through their portal, it comes directly down to the administration team and we handle it immediately. We want to make sure that it's taken care of on the patient's side, the facility side, or the city side, wherever the issue is coming from. And then we bring all of our parties involved with it as well. Because I don't want the city to or the county to get blindsided with the situation at the last minute. Says, oh, I wish I would have known about that two weeks ago before this happened. So we want to work on it together to make sure that those problems are resolved on, you know, equal terms for the city, the county, the patient and their company.
Were you, were you, a part of that question, what you asked about, like, for example, if there is a complaint, I'd recommend a bad A provider, you know, during a run, you know. I think probably whatever you choose, you have to have a process where you actually monitor the quality services that they're getting provided to the city. Okay, and so where that's, you know, meeting seventy two months or something as far as, you know, be able to, whoever you choose, bring that up to you and say, this is how we have performed, you know, this is how we actually have interacted with the city and the county. And this is our opportunities. So you as a partner, you know, can actually lead through that process and be able to give us, or give anybody insight as far as, you know. And this is our opportunities, so you as a partner, you know, can actually leave through that process and be able to give us, or give anybody insight as far as, you know, how to make it better. It, it, that, that's, I, I don't know if that's what you were going with, yes, but, you know, having a process, a regulatory process that falls back at the end, you know, the process, you know, or you finding out that there was a complaint about a company six months later, it really doesn't tell, you know, how the services are gonna be provided for the city and county. I really think that whoever you choose, you have to have a process in place where you can actually monitor the quality of the process to be there to the city.
That kind of leads into the next question as far as reporting. I know all of you in several meetings have mentioned the access to reports, information for both the city and the county. Um, in the past, we typically got a number of calls, if it was city, if it was county, we may or may not have gotten it on a regular basis, and, and this is where I do definitely agree with you. It is our responsibility as well to monitor your services and to, to keep on top of, of those issues. But I also do feel like that, uh, if something does come up, that, that, there's that communication back with the entity that you're working for. When it comes to reporting, I wanted to get a little bit more information, uh, we're not really, I mean, we're not worried about the hipposide and, and what happens, but more, how do you handle and, and if, if we put a package together, you know, and have the, okay, well, how many complaints did you get? How many calls did you get? How would you be able to prepare that information if both the county and the city wanted it digitally, or if they wanted you to be present? Um, would it be an email? What, what process have you done in the past for other entities?
I can answer that. So for us, it would be transparency, whether that's on a monthly basis, quarterly basis, we would share the number of runs, and this can all be in the contract, and we can provide the city or the county, whoever's gonna be the entity that we're signing with, a contract that has all of that information that you, as the citizens of Alpine, will be looking for. We do this all over the country where we're providing the number of calls, the number of no transports, the number of patients that were taken to Big Ben, those that refused. Uh, we can also go from the time of call till the time dispatched, till the time arrival scene, till the time that we were canceled, or till the time that we met patient, till the time that we got to the hospital, till the time that we were cleared. We can provide all of that information at a touch of a button, however you want that to be, whether that's uh, in person, or whether you want that electronically at every meeting, if you need a member here, I'm here, I drove four and a half hours to get here today, I'll do it again.
And, you know, I had a pair of shoes in love that keep it a broad.
Draw them to you.
It's my opportunity.
I'm better than FedEx. So it's, it's whatever the council and the county commissioners want to see on that report. There is nothing that we're not gonna share. So if you ask me for, I mean, a hundred line items, and we capture that data, I'll share it with you. I have no reason not to do that because it's in the right, it's the right thing to do for the patients and for the citizens, like I said in the beginning, we're very transparent and open, and we want you to feel like that we're not trying to hide anything at all, no reason to.
Okay, okay. For us, we're gonna give you access to our ESO reporting system. So you're able to gain all of that information, everything from the time that call was dispatched, uh, to the time that patient was picked up, you know, kind of the details he went into. So you have everything and you're able to understand it all. We're also gonna provide you in your area, you're gonna have a supervisor that would hopefully, hope to hire local, so that person can deal with us on a day-to-day basis. So there is no delay of having to wait to the weekly meeting or the monthly meeting. And then we're also gonna have administration attend monthly meetings with your team. Especially within the first six months of growing this together, there's gonna be a lot of boots on the ground ultimately. We want to make sure that we're able to handle and address any situation in a timely fashion, if almost not immediately. You know, we have local reps within the area, I say local, but I notice things are a little bit far out here for sure. Uh, we do have our current local reps that Miss Selleck way in the back, you know? Uh, she's able to almost immediately come this way to address any situations in person. So you know that you're getting any problems handled appropriately. We don't like things to fall through the cracks or go through a lot of red tape to get addressed in an appropriate timeframe. So we want to provide whatever resources are needed, you know, from the report system to the boots on the ground, to people here at the meetings, because we also want to get that feedback from the citizens, we want to hear how we're doing on a monthly basis. What feedback do they have for us to improve? Because we know not everybody's perfect, you know, if anyone claims they're perfect, they're crazy. Uh, but we want to make sure if we do have anything that's not perfect, how are we gonna address it, how quickly are we gonna address it, are we gonna address it appropriately to meet the needs of the cities, the county, and the patients?
We go a step further. It, there is a, there's a lot of data that it can be automatically produced by times, if, that, that's standard. What I would recommend to you, every time that we start a new line of service in a hospital system, we know that we're human, we know that we're gonna make mistakes, we know that we're trying to prevent those mistakes from happening, and I, what I mean mistakes, I mean, as far as, you know, process through, things like that. So what we standard, standardized developed, what we call a scorecard. Okay, the scorecard is really truly a measuring tool that changes and breathes, okay, so let's say that we have for a patient that pain was not addressed, okay? That's important for your patient, it has to be addressed. You know, we're not looking only at how we're gonna move that patient from A to B, but the quality of care that the patient perceived while you were with people, before she was with people. Okay, so do we address, you know, pain? And then we have set cases, like, we have to address pain five times at a time, otherwise you will fall off, and we'll have a, a uh, process to, you know, process improvement plan, you know, to fix that. We know that those things change, once you have a process that you mastered for that community, for that process, then it falls off, and then you bring another one, it's a breathing mechanism. You know, we're always gonna have opportunity to change, we're always gonna have opportunity to improve. And there's so many factors that influence that, the time of the day, the crew experience, everything else that is changing, that if you're not really looking, you'll miss it. And you won't have quality care now, whoever you choose, you should be demanding tools that help you look at how better you really are and how you're gonna become better after that. Okay, and there, there's, all these processes are set and, and, and all that, you gotta be, you gotta be present, you gotta be present to actually be able to close a circle. Because it doesn't matter how good any of us, we think we are, you know, what really matters is the perception of the people that we're serving. And that, 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 that's part of the, you know, of, of the quality process that, again, no matter who you choose, you should demand.
But I can assure you, you're not gonna get a, a, a letter one day from us basically saying, hey, here's a response time for this month and, and that type of stuff. But we're gonna be here, we're gonna be in, in, in front of you, um, regardless whether or not we're meeting monthly, whether or not we're attending these meetings regularly, and county meetings regularly, and the hospital regularly. And then in addition to that, to be honest, one of the, the things that makes us a little bit different is, I will be here personally, I will be on the ambulance every now and then, I will be doing that type of stuff, so I'm gonna be seeing and living and breathing it as well as all of my employees and everything as well. So, um, again, you know, how do you know there's problems when you live it? So, um.
I'd like to make a statement, I've been very quiet because I've heard this for weeks now. We've now been faced with tasks. Jerry, Martine, Sarah's not here, Chris, me, Jim, Elizar, Sarah from down south, uh, Ruben, and Coach, of taking care of all of these people in that. And, and it's a very scary situation, it can make you think, God, what if we, what if we pick the, pick AMR and then something happens and it was the wrong one, what if we pick you, what if we pick you? And it's, it's, it, it, it truly has kept me up at night. My biggest fear is that we're gonna hire y'all on the money we have, and next October, when y'all put it to, to paper like Greg did for us, Greg did a, I'm holding it, a county one, and there's a negative number at the bottom. And are we gonna be hit with a bill we can't afford and, and be right back in this for next year? That's our concern, I know you can't answer it, I know you don't have the numbers, I know you don't have anything. That is my concern, because you'll do a good job, y'all will do a good job, you'll do a good job. But now you've given it to ten people to decide for this huge area, and it's very hard, we were dependent on the SCOTters. And, and we took the SCOTters for granted because they didn't, nobody questioned it, I got on the cancer, I never in my wildest dreams figured I would know about an, uh, an I F T, I, I, I still don't want to know, I wrote it down, but I didn't want to know. You know, Greg has educated us in the task force meetings until I really think I could do it, I, I'm, I'm, I'm I'm seriously thinking I'll get a little training, you know, I know I could save my dog if nothing else. And I think that's all of our concerns. Right now, yeah, we've got a little money going. But what's gonna happen when y'all come in here and take a huge, huge loss, are y'all gonna go, well, we didn't like those people that much in the first place, and you're isolated out there, there's no place to live, there's four restaurants, we can't get E M Ps, we can't get no Walmart, no Target, no, you know, and I think that's all our, our concerns as is at the commissioners, I know they have the exact same concerns. So I, I don't even expect an answer, that's just my thoughts.
First, that, first and foremost, I don't think you're gonna go wrong with the choice with anyone, to be honest with you, you know, thank God, we're all here, we're all committed, and we all want to do the right thing. But I will tell you. The second part of that is, I think our commitment to you is that you're not gonna get to November or the end of the fiscal cycle and then say, hey, there's a problem. They're gonna know next month.
Oh, I know.
You know, and, and then we're gonna be working through it next month, whether, however, or whatever it takes to, to make sure that, that it's, that it's, we're, we're doing what we're supposed to be doing. So.
I, I would just say that we're already here, it makes a lot of sense for us to come in and provide the service for you for the nine one one and the I F T market because we're already here in the community. We're paying utilities, we're paying, we're buying, we're eating, we're living.
They're living in my ward.
Yeah, so.
Sat on the porch.
So we're, we're doing, we're already here, so for us, I'm not concerned about the what if, but what can we do right now? And to make it better for the citizens, and I'm not saying that Greg and his team are not doing what they, the best job that they can do. And they're doing an outstanding job, but I promise you, if I walked out, he handed me the keys, it wouldn't be a surprise, you know, because he's got an area that he has to cover.
I guess our biggest concern, we just, like, May, May and I have talked about it, and she's brought it up several times, that we don't want to be just a number.
It, it's, it's not bad for, for us, it's not that, I don't care, I know we get a lot of hit, a lot of mud thrown at us because we're the big, big company in the room. But rest assured that when people are losing their EMS service, they're calling us to ask for help and what we can do for them to serve their community because their EMS service is going under. We get those calls all the time, not just in Texas, but Oklahoma, New Mexico, it, it's a constant battle because of the, the times that we're in today, it's ever-changing. And EMS services are going out of business all the time.
Is there a, go ahead.
I was just gonna say real fast as well, so we are here as well, I mean, there, there was one twenty-four hour period that, um, had a big snowstorm, and actually we had to get escorted with the plows, and I was personally on that, I, I came, I gave twenty-four hours to come here and, and, and move patients and do that type of stuff, and so, again, um, you know, we're here as well, we do routinely fly in, we do, we routinely, um, do the more complex stuff, and, and we're, we're excited to be able to show you guys what we can do as well.
You know, Mr. Stone, I've been asked that question probably about ten times in my professional life. That, can we really do this? You know, are we, this gonna be financially feasible? Are we gonna go for a loan for building a children's hospital? And is this gonna be financially feasible? You know, how, how, do we have the ability to create, you know, uh, pediatric intensive care unit in our elderly community? You know, and the answer is that, you know, we build things with our hands. And every single time, the best words that anybody can tell me is like, you cannot do it. Because we gotta figure out a way, you know, between reason to be able to get it done. He is right, no matter who you pick, you're the one. You're the one, so whoever you pick, you know, you're gonna have to create a partnership to be able to see that failure is not an option, and I'm talking about a financial failure, medical mission failure, any, nothing is gonna fail because at the end of the day, you, whoever you pick is gonna be committed, all right? And the future is what I actually was gonna make the record.
Absolutely, kind of like, just to build off of what he said, failure isn't an option. So with any one of us, I, I can already tell everyone's personality here, it, we're not gonna let it be an option for it. Once we're part of your community, it's figuring it out together at all costs, there is no stepping back and saying, this is your area. No, once we're here, we're part of this community and we're dedicated to grow with it.
Very good.
I just have an oddball question.
I'm sure.
Can't be worse than mine. So, we, we have a city-owned swimming pool, are you, are any one of you able to teach CPR and first aid and certified lifeguards?
Yes, yes. Sure, and lifeguard, and first aid and CPR, yeah, so. And this is a small, it's a saltwater pool when I could float. I got a chance there. But, of course, the reality is, we could, anything's possible, right, it's just a matter of finding the resource and bringing people.
And I'm actually a instructor myself, so either Neil Selleck, we're both trained in it, so we're, we're happy to come down and teach, so.
Our goal is to help grow the community together, help them get more comfortable with understanding what EMS is and educating them as well. You know, we want them to understand CPR, we want them to know how to do stuff. We want the Boy Scouts and the Girl Scouts to get comfortable with us, you know, they need to get their badges, but they also need to understand how to do first aid. So our, one of our big plans is to help push community education. We love to integrate ourselves with every single aspect of the city and county.
Do y'all have any programs that you offer where a non-insured family could pay a certain amount every month and then have access to your services?
Like a membership?
Yeah, like, I know, you know.
What does Rod have?
Oh, that's the fire department, they have like a program where you pay, it's your water bill, or.
Yeah, so we, we do, uh, actually, uh, have the capability of a membership for, I don't wanna get into the details because I don't have the membership expert with me, but I did talk to him on the way out here, and we can, and we have, and we do provide air-ground membership.
There's something that should be.
Yeah.
Highly encouraged.
But keep in mind, something that was discussed during the, the county commissioners meeting is a balanced bill. They are hitting the air medical side really hard right now, but they're also talking about on the ground side too. It's not yet happening, but the air side is, so there's no balanced billing happening, not starting as a, supposed to be January.
When you say balanced billing, uh, I'm sorry.
Basically, when you receive a bill, and, um, a lot of times the insurance company will pay, let's say, a dollar, and then the, the company will send you a bill for ten dollars, saying, hey, you owe me ten dollars. So, uh, new federal statutes and stuff don't allow that to happen for the air medical side.
You, you might have a out-of-pocket deductible, and that's where that membership comes into play. So if you have the membership, and ours is, on the air side is eighty-five dollars for the entire household, if you have that membership and we fly you, it is a real bill.
Yeah, and, and in an emergency scenario, right, so.
And I'm a member.
Well, thank you. For a long time, thank you, we appreciate that.
Sorry, you all say that.
Are you interested in having another membership?
Be careful, because one membership gets it.
We have enough room to carry another car.
So is it pretty safe to say that, and I don't know if this even happens, or just, you know, kind of, your other companies could carry Alpine if we're not making money in a while, I mean, you're, you're willing to know that, hey, the chances are that having the border so close, uh, you know, that type of thing, that might be a few years before you actually make money?
For us, yeah, I would say we've all analyzed the market very heavily to, before.
For us, yeah, I would say we've all analyzed the market very heavily to, before we decided to come and sit down and utilize your time. Uh, to say, yeah, we can do that. We we know where the numbers are at. We've also analyzed it with inflation. And how everything is going through the roof and understand, okay, we do have a large timeframe to be able to subsidize ourselves as well to maintain the market. So absolutely.
Any more questions?
Well, I I would like to kind of open up a little bit more for public comment. Um, this is a very important decision. Um, I don't know if there's anyone else. I and I I do, I'm grateful that, you know, Julian brought in. Some information, especially with the fire department, they've all offered some education and training and we may be able to grab those volunteers and pull them into some EMS and and that grow them themselves. Um, is there anyone else in in the audience who who may like to make a comment or or has a question? This is your opportunity to take advantage of it. I don't know if we have anyone on Zoom, but I really would like the the additional input if possible.
Yes, I would like to know.
It goes, state your name and what work.
Could you come to the podium, please?
Yes.
Mayor, Council, Mr. Potten, presenters, I would like to know, this is my first meeting that I've been able to attend because I work full time. And listening to everyone present, you sound very similar, what you have to offer. Could you take a moment and tell me why the county and city should choose your service? What do you have to offer that's different from another presenter?
I would say for us, what's different from others is. You get us, you know, you get us personally that we're gonna dedicate our time, energy, mind, soul to ensure that. Alpine and the county are taking care of appropriately. We will give you the level of service that you demand, that you deserve for this area. So that being said, you get city ambulance, it's family, and you become family with us. You you are not just another punch in, punch out. You are no longer a vendor, you're family with us, and we'll treat you like that. You know, you're someone's brother, you're someone's sister, you're some someone's mother, grandmother and uncle and so forth and so forth, and we're gonna treat you that way. You're gonna get customized personal service from us. We grow our company off of doing concierge service. So we'll take that concierge level service that we've integrated with our hospitals and our free stand ins and offer it to the community.
I think for us, you know, what the difference is the experience of actually building things from scratch. Building things on the middle of the desert, building things that people judge that they were not feasible, that they're here, present, thriving, growing, and making a difference. I'll just say that.
Thank you.
You're getting a. We get a lot of dirt thrown at us because we're the big company in the room. And that is true. However, you get every bit of the thirty eight thousand employees that we have. Uh, the four hundred plus bases that we have in Texas, the three hundred and fifty air medical. Fix wing or rotor wing that we have, you get uh the opportunity to, if the fire department needs a piece of equipment and we can do that, we also do fire departments. We can get into a purchase agreement with that entity where they can provide equipment uh at our at our rates and because of our purchasing power. But I will tell you what you're getting is me and my team. And what we bring to the table because I, as I've stated, I don't know if you were here when we started, but I'm from a small community. Uh, I grew up in Crossington, Texas. I was an E M T volunteer. I grew up in the room. I now live in one of them. And we are present, and I think if you go and ask Reece County, if we've been present in long time with our need with the needs of the county. They would absolutely tell you that we have, and whether that's Arrow Care or A M R.
Love the question. It's hard work, right? There's a lot, a lot ahead of us, but we're not afraid to get in and be here and build it together. So and I think one of the things that we've also said from the very beginning as well is whether we're here to help provide the service. Some point I say, hey, we want to uh try to do this ourselves. Let's let's put this stuff in place to make that happen too. So there's the fire department, the sheriff's department, start training people, um, start the application process, you know, let's get everything in place. So now all of a sudden, some point down the road, if you choose to exercise that option, you have that ability as well, and and we will be glad to help with doing that as well.
So what I'm hearing is that if I have a concern or something, I can speak to you gentlemen, and my communication is not gonna stop with the representatives you have at the back of the room. I am, we're gonna be able to get a hold of you. Some of us don't sleep well. Well, there's just so many companies that you try, and you know, I want to be able to say, well, remember when we talked and this is what you told me. Because I think that, you know, that's the only way that we're going to be able to have that kind of relationship that all of you seem to want to have with us. You know, is being able to have access to each other and being able to voice our concerns and our.
And hopefully we pat us on the back.
Yes, that too, that too.
There's something bad, get ready. That will be Navy calling if it's bad.
Make a phone call directly with us. We have the authority to make those decisions. We don't have to go to any uppers past us to say, okay, well, can I get this approved? Can I get this approved? Can I go through this department? You get us immediately and you get decisions done.
May I ask one more question?
Sure.
Okay, so you made me think of something. If we were to call the communities that you currently serve. What is one thing that they would say that was good about you and one thing that they would say they would like for you to work on?
I'll go first. Uh, I'd say one of the things they'll say that's good about us is uh our accountability, our in person. Yes, you know, uh, that we're always available for a phone conversation, offering in person meeting. If anyone ever asks us to be present, it doesn't matter where I'm at. I will drive, I will fly, I will ride my motorcycle. All the way to make sure that I am present to know, to let whoever we're meeting with know that we care, that we're gonna make those changes. Or thank you very much for craziness. The one thing that they're gonna say is probably, I need an assistant and three more phones. So I'm constantly not juggling or meeting stuff during meetings. But ultimately, I would say their best improvement, everyone's gonna say more staff. We love to always have more staff. You know, uh, I'd love to throw you twenty seven trucks if that's what you need, but you know, ultimately, we can't do that right away. So, you know. See, that's that's about it. There's no rule of craziness.
Thank you.
I would say all you have to do is call Vicman Regional Medical Center and ask them to us simply. You'd be, you know, and um typically, we're the guys that they call when a lot of little people say no. And regardless of what that is, um, we find a way to get things done as long as we can do it safely. And um as far as uh. Oh, boy, uh, finding things that they don't like about me. No, I I think the only thing that I could kind of say about that is I'm not afraid to say what I think.
Okay.
And express my opinion and I'm not not afraid to be corrected if I'm wrong. Because I believe that communication is the the key to basically everything, whether it's concerns or anything along that line. And and so um like you had mentioned, I I do expect you to have these out, but um my my cell phone number is on here and it truly is my cell phone. So if you can call it and I will answer and it will be me, it's not a, it's not anybody else, and it's and it's truly me twenty four seven, three sixty five. And if in the event I'm not there, well, I got Walter back there somewhere. He, you know, so we did want that in place as well. Passionate quality here is probably what you wouldn't ask how people will state that so companies all out.
Think we're true to who we say we are with our customers and our patients. Uh, I think we pride ourselves on safety, patient care and customer service. I will give you an example of who we are. Uh, we basically put ourselves out of business in Reece County by providing nine one one to that uh city while the E S D. Was ramping up their services. And so basically I worked, I worked ourselves out of a job. Knowing that, we put all of the resources in the community, covered it with the same amount of trucks that they were using when they were first fly. And provided that care and worked hand in hand with uh the E S D. When they staffed their trucks up, we pulled our staffs. Out of the city and moved them to the county. And so now we're covering the county. And at some point, they're going to move their sales out into county with their equipment and then we're gone. So basically what I've done is I've worked myself out of a job. And in that community, but it's the right, it was the right work and we abided by what we said we would do. And they held up their end of the deal and we held up our end of the deal. So I would say we're true to who we say we are and what we're gonna do for the communities that we're serving. And I think if you call Reece County Hospital District, or if you call up here to Big Ben, Dr. Rick, I think they'll tell you that's exactly who we are. Is it safe if we're providing the best patient care possible? And providing more class customer service. That's the three things that we discuss within my region, within my leadership team.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I want to thank you all for taking the time to come meet with us separately. It was in no way uh a way for us to delay the process or anything of that nature. It was just trying to get an opportunity to allow the citizens of Alpine to know that the city was taking a proactive role in this decision making and. We do appreciate it and I agree with you all. You all are are either one of you that we get, we're gonna, we're we're winning, we're winning no matter what we do. But do appreciate your time and hopefully we'll be working with somebody soon.
Hopefully everybody, right?
Got one quick question. When someone calls nine one one, they'll get the A P D or the sheriff's office. And then they transfer the call to you guys or your call center? Or how does that work?
We we as in G M R, A M R can set it up either way. We we have it set up right now in some of the locations where the P C app takes the call and then they merge our communication center in. And once they get the information, they just they dispatch us locally and then the our communication center takes the information and provides it through the logist. As some of you heard during my presentation, we have this logist device uh that is a CAD system that they carry. And that information provides the the location of that particular call and it's done through the E M D system in our communication center. We can do it either way. Uh, we don't want to put a strain on the system, but if it's the best thing to do, I I believe the police chief asked me that question directly. Uh, during the county commissioners and we're happy to abide by whatever works.
Mayor, I checked with Maurice O'Keefe today with the Rio Grande COG that is pushing the the new nine one one. Computerized uh center that's so so helpful to us. And she said there's a button on there, the nine one one call comes in, it's a. S O, but it needs to go to the P D. They just push a button and it goes to the other dispatcher. So it's 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 seamless to to work with both entities.
Yeah, because, you know, Alpine and uh Bruce County were very unique in that we have the nine one one system. That'll pinpoint the individual where they're at, not taking it off a tower and give you a general idea, especially if you're in in uh. Marathon, that you live on twenty twenty two, and a low. And so that's what I was kind of trying to figure out.
We we would bring in our communication center experts to Alpine and sit down and bring everybody to the table to figure out what's the best way. To get those calls dispatched via nine one one. And we have the expertise from the communication center side. Uh, and we're happy to sit down and align what works best for the uh city and the care.
So we have a com center and a dispatcher as well, but I also really strongly believe that dispatch should be here and local. So, you know, it's a typical thing that, you know, you tell somebody one thing and by the time it gets all the way to the third person, you're missing things. And and that can be problematic in what we do. It can cost somebody their life or pitch. So I'm not saying that um um what they're advocating for is is a bad thing by any means. But what I am saying though is that um if it was up to me, I I would, we would work with your dispatcher and and what we could do to to have you guys continue to just to dispatch us.
For us, we utilize your current system that you have in place now with, whether it's from the S O's office or police department and utilize that as our first dispatcher. So our crews can start rolling and that information would get immediately transferred over to our system. And then our dispatchers on the backend will work with your dispatchers to fill in any of those gaps for any of the technical data need on that side. Uh, but now if your system said, hey, you know, this is too much, things are getting over flooded, then we'd come in and work with you as well to say, okay, what can we do to. Minimize that strain on the system you have here? Do we need to start utilizing our dispatch system where those calls get transferred? We work with you to see what works best. You know, we don't want to change the mold. We just want to fit into the mold with you to make sure that there are no hiccups once again. Uh, my biggest concern is the citizens never feel the change. They only see the improvements.
Well, Carbine may hate you for this, but but we want to to push the limits to this new software. We are very lucky in this region. We are the first in the nation to have a fully cloud base. You can do video, text, everything. Um, and and we want to test it. We want to know its capabilities. And I know Daryl has been very proud and and we're all proud of our dispatchers who've taken on this new system and.
Yeah, we'd love to integrate ourselves in with it and. Learn the system with you, grow the system with you, especially if you're the first region to have it in the U S. There's gonna be a lot of growth opportunities and it would allow us the chance to see how the system works and how great it works. We can possibly push it off to other markets that will work and we can give them better opportunities.
Yeah, we were uh extremely lucky with the COG that they introduced a system here. Like Megan said, the first in the U S and possibly the world that has this system. And very unique system. So we're very proud of it. So you could collaborate with Carbine and uh whatever is chosen. And maybe you can integrate your system with this nine one one system that we have. Any more questions from anybody?
Can I have one of those, please?
Yes, ma'am. I was I was kind of waiting.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Can I ask if my team has any questions or comments?
You should.
There on Zoom. Bobby, Robert, uh, anything, uh, James, anything that you have that you'd like to share with the group?
No, sir. I'm I'm good. Thank you for the opportunity, though.
Thanks, Bobby. James? James will be a fellow.
She's blaming?
We were born.
Thanks.
And I would like to leave it the same way Judge Ellis R. kind of brought it up, but if there are any questions and there's comments or things that need to be followed up with. Um, commissioners and council members may wa- um reach out as well. They all have your information. Um, just as like I said, this is a big decision, an important decision, and and we're all just, it's for our community. It's our mothers, our fathers, our children, and we want to make sure that whatever.
Hi, I I'm sorry y'all couldn't hear me. I must have been on mute. Uh, we own Carbine.
There you go.
Oh, wow.
So yes, we can handle that. We are the big company in the room, so.
I'm in Lewisville, Texas, or I'd be there. These these two days, we've been with our Carbine partners. We own Carbine.
Cool.
I hope they give you a good deal.
The bargaining.
We got the bargaining chip here now. No, but.
James will be calling you.
Yeah, but we do appreciate that y'all showed up this evening. Uh, it was for clarity for the ones that could not make the meeting at Commissioners Court. And and this, but again, by no means is that we're going on our own agenda. We still have to get together with the county and make sure we we can get all our ideas and thoughts together before we move forward.
Thank you for the opportunity. Yeah, this is, thank y'all. Thank you for the city's time, the county's time, everyone who showed up as well to make sure that there are no questions afterwards. We want everyone to feel comfortable with whatever provider you pick. Like I said, I think everyone's gonna be a a great choice for you for sure. And, you know, any of us look for the opportunity and utilize any of our phone numbers to. You'll ask as a resource, you know, we want to make sure wherever you go with, it goes smooth and without a lot.
Thank you.
And we appreciate that that you guys are, don't act like competitors. You act like you're still family like we are here in Alpine.
EMS is a very small.
So I appreciate that um y'all were very helpful in answering all the questions that were asked and. And we'll get together now with the county and see what we decide on. Okay, thank you very much. Workshops adjourned, yes, sir.